All right. It's being 6:03 PM. I'd like to call this Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee meeting to order. This is the number 1,611st meeting. I would like to acknowledge that this is a one year since our last budget passing and school closed the day after. And this trusty crew that we have, both our school committee members and our administration, our teachers who have been at this challenge for a full year. So in honor of all their work, I would like to move this meeting as fast forward as we can so we can listen to the president's speech at 8 o'clock to the country about where we how we go forward. So excuse me now, I'm just announcing that, what question you want to ask because it may be the only one that you get a chance to ask. If discussions go on too long, I may cut some short. So looking forward to a really interesting meeting. We have a lot of interesting things to talk about. I would like a motion to add student spotlight to the agenda as number four. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second from. Roll call vote. Dennis Seer.
Here. Aye.
Hannah?
Yes.
Did you say me? Sorry.
Sorry, I'm looking, I should look this way. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Okay, Jeffrey? Let me see. Where am I? Oh, Arthur?
Yes.
And me, yes, okay. So we are.
You didn't call me.
So sorry.
But I'll say yes. You didn't call me.
Oh, this is a great start, Jenna.
Yes.
All right.
I rearranged, I read across the top.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to get my list of people out here like I did last week. And we'll do a lot better. Okay, so I'll take a, I'm going to standing report. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of school committee number 1,600 on March 4th.
So moved.
Uh, uh, Jeffrey. Are there any amendments, changes needed to those minutes?
I have just a couple of tiny things which I can just send directly to Lynette.
Thank you so much for your close reading, Bonnie. I'll take a roll call vote then. And here's my list. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, Jenna?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis Seer?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yeah, all right. And now we have the minutes from the public hearing of March 4th. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second from Jeffrey. Any discussion or add for this? Doesn't look like it, so we'll have another roll call vote. Jeffrey? Not here. Excuse me, Jenna?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis Seer?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
All right. Miscellaneous correspondence. I know we have something worth sending out which we will deal with later, so thank you. We will go next, item three. Odegaard Fields is here to do the student representative report. Welcome, Odie.
I thank you, everyone. My name is Odie Fields. I am 16 and I am an 11th grader at Mount Everett. And I'm about to attempt to share my screen to show you guys what the past month advisories have been working on. And so advisory, advisory committee was asked all the advisories to paper their doors with, in support of Black History Month. And so a lot of, a lot of doors did. And here is a couple pictures I took of doors that were really nicely decorated. All right, so can everyone see the picture ideally of a door?
Yeah.
Awesome. This happens to be my advisory and I'll be really quick. This was Basquiat, who is a really cool artist. And we'll slip through, flip through them pretty quickly. Here's Ms. Aldum's door. And so I was focused on a couple really awesome people and then we'll keep going. This is a middle school teacher's door. I forget her name. She teaches science. And so this is really awesome, lots of color. And next month is Women's History Month. And so the advisory committee just sent out a little memo to all the advisories about on what to do for that one. So this is a really cool theme that's going to happen throughout the, at the year for each month. That's pretty exciting. Just overall, the weather has been really nice. People are going outside. We eat outside for lunch this, today, which was pretty big and really fun. So people are, and the vaccine rule kind of uplifted the feeling of a pandemic. I think that's, oh, here's one more. As you can see, there's W E B DuBois up there. And then this is Chad Bosman, who passed on last year, pretty recently. All right, that's all I have.
Good. Nice.
Thank you very much for the graphics and sharing the student work like that and bringing the advisory to life because you know it was an important addition to our school. So thank you for taking the time to get the photos.
Absolutely. Question.
Yeah.
Odie, how was, how was it, the information circulated so that everybody was able to participate?
So the advisory committee, which I didn't really know about till pretty recently, just sends out an email to all the teachers who have advisories, which is most teachers. And then they present the idea to the students.
Thank you. And was there good participation?
Yeah, yes, there is.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much, Odie. And now we have a student represent, sorry, student spotlight. And I see Isabella Kemp has signed on.
Yeah. Mr. President.
Yeah, I'll introduce her. We have Isabella Kemp with us, who is part of the Sustainability Coalition, which we started last year. And she's going to talk a little bit about some of their goals. And they've had their first speaker of the year, which was Ezra Small, who was a man of a graduate, who spoke. So Isabella, if you want to take it away, you'd appreciate it.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm Isabella. I'm a senior at Mount Everett and co-president of the Sustainability Coalition. I guess I can just, well, I guess I can go over just like, we were, we had like a really successful event at February, on February 26th with Ezra. We had over 60 people registered for the event, which was really amazing. And we've received like awesome support from the community, both from like partner organizations and media. And have published in The Edge, The Eagle, Maggie's List, and a few other listservs. As of now, are, we are like mostly focused on the series and promoting that. But we are also working on like a few other initiatives, including like the sort of like switch over of cafeteria silverware to more compostable options as well as like the.
Well, we lost Isabella.
Unfortunately, she was a new marvel. Oh, send me back. There she is.
She's back.
Those are, my internet's not the best. Yeah, so we've like have a few other initiatives. The Sustainability Coalition started with DC Caldwell approached Lindsay Berkowitz, our faculty advisor. And initially started as we were interested in extending the elementary comping program into the high school. And then I sort of proposed this idea for the Sustainability Speaker Series and wrote a grant, a community foundation grant. And then like there. But we're continuing to like work on the compass and the extension of the program. And as of recently, are working on like a presentation for Arbor Day on April 30th.
Anybody have questions for Isabella?
The kids are part of the group.
As of now, there are three officers who are seniors. And then we have a few additional members. Just, we only have like three other additional members, but we are working on like promoting the club and continue to keep getting requests, which is really exciting.
Student initiative, which makes us very proud to support your work. And those are the other students who are coming out and trying to change the world.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I encourage you to attend the next one of the series I attended? I can send you information if you don't have access to it. So public comments, is there anyone who has any public comments on our agenda items? Welcoming Danell in tonight now. All right, here's seeing no hands raised. I will go on to the big new business of the night. And I don't want you fighting over who gets to read the motion to approve the FY22 operating and capital budgets because we gave it such a rousing cheer last week. So who would like to read the motion in its entirety?
I'll do it. I moved to adopt the financial year 22 operating transportation and capital budgets. Motion to approve the FY22 operating transportation capital budgets as follow. FY22 budget, operating expenditure budget of $15,635,708. Transportation expenditure budget of $1,451,698. Capital expenditure budget of $352,000. Capital project bond repayment of $355,150. Total expenditure budget of $17,794,556. FY22 assessments with an operating assessment of $12,512,481. Transportation assessment of $1,161,722. Capital assessment of $281,688. Capital project assessment of $284,209. Total to be assessed at $14,240,100.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jeffrey.
Second.
Second.
We have two seconds, one from Arthur. I think he got there first, Bonnie.
Follow me.
Any further questions that anybody has before we do our roll call vote?
Again, thank you to the staff. This was some great work that they did.
And thank you to the finance subcommittee that put in a lot of hours on this in a tough time of year. So I will call the roll call vote now. And very fitting that the chair of the finance committee would be the first to vote.
Yes.
Danell, can you hear me?
I can. Yes.
Thank you. Jenna?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jonathan's not on yet. Dennis Seer?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, I'm happy to say unanimous vote for this very hard, the hard worked out and special budget. I feel very, very proud of the work that was done. All right, now we have another big item, which is the Mount Everett Program of Studies. I would like a motion to approve the program of study so we can get the discussion going.
So moved.
Arthur in a second.
Bonnie, second.
Thank you, Bonnie. Having read this, Bonnie and some other great readers like Dennis often pick up thematical things that need addressing, but there's, which I think could be shared with the administration. But does anybody have a question about content?
Yes, I do. Bonnie, you answered the first one, which is, Jesse, should I just call you with some of the editing issues? Okay, that's just like simplified, but questions I have, when you go through the program in the beginning, it talks about the graduation requirements for graduates 21 and 22. And then for starting with 23, the numbers change, social studies goes up, and there are other increased requirements. But when you look at the programs of study for the different major areas, like if you're doing, I don't know, let's say the global studies one, or everything is done as though the requirements are already in effect for the 20, starting for the 23 graduating class. So do the kids understand that?
Yeah, that was done intentionally when we did it because the pathways that we have under those, really, we weren't sure how many of the older kids would opt into them. And so guidance will talk to those kids. And the ones that want to opt into the pathways can. So we had some seniors this year who got involved a little bit and certainly some juniors. But really, that class that came up, which is now sophomores, was the first class to be presented with the pathway options when they arrived in grade. So that's why it reads the way it does.
You do that on purpose. All right, next one is a personal, just really personal here, which is when I look at the social studies offerings, especially, you know, where we are, and I look at issues related to personal finance, it's not there. The economics course is, description is a macro. And governments is, you know, the whole area of citizenship. To me, it doesn't seem that it's, this is personal view. You can tell me where I'm wrong, but that the actions taken by the state to increase citizenship education and also the personal finance does not seem to be reflected in the social studies curriculum. So that's for me, you know, you know my background, so that's my personal, I think it's critical if we're preparing our kids in terms of any career paths, that personal finance.
Yeah, the personal finance has been built into the economics class as part of the state's change in the social studies curriculum. So that economics class is not going to be the same economics class that we've altered in the past to 10th graders. Now it's going to be for 11th and 12th graders, and it's going to include that financial piece. In a similar way, the honors government class that we've had for years is taking on some of the civics at the high school level, which makes sense because the eighth grade curriculum is now totally civics taught by John Hammel. Mr. Hammel's going to continue to teach that US government class. And he's going to embed some of those civics things that need to be covered in high school into his US government class.
So maybe it's just a matter of tweaking those two descriptions so that they reflect that. And then all the little stuff like grammaticals, I'll just call about.
Thank you very much for your close reading.
Oh, anytime.
Carrie Anne, you have your hand up?
Thank you so much. I'm wondering if somebody could offer some context for us newbies about the, how this document plays into anything, you know, particularly, you know, looking at the change log. I understand in terms of the requirements and those pieces, but the edited aspects of the courses. And then the second half of that is, what are the ways that these changes in courses, whether it's in title or text, then relate to the curriculum evaluation that we've talked about in relation to our anti-bias, anti-racism statement?
So the process of the program of studies is our department heads meet monthly with their departments. And so we start at the department level where they spend some time looking at the course offerings, seeing which students are populating those classes, looking at some electives that might have been popular at one point, but then sort of lose their popularity. And in some cases, it's a tweaking of classes and sometimes it's a new offering. And so, you know, we've changed over the years, I would say over the last three years, we've got a good number of classes go in, come out, whether it's because of student interest. And, you know, like a student will talk to John Hammel about social studies and say, you know, a couple of us are really interested in a class like this. That's really how philosophy started. You know, we had some kids express interest in it, and then we were able to put a class together to see how many would jump in. We've had similar success with our film, psychology and film class. We've had equal success with some of our English offerings, where we had a graphic novel class put in because of the increase in kids who are enjoying that type of literacy. And so what happens from there is they'll send us, meaning my office, their changes, which we'll look over, have conversations about what it looks like, and then make sure they're edited up and ready to go in the program of studies. Some of the things we've offered are geared more towards the pathways. So, you know, we have added, you know, a marketing class for next year because as part of the entrepreneurship pathway, we thought that was a place where kids had some interest and we thought we could gain some ground there. Part of what we do with Bard College, we try to find some classes the kids want, but that also are embedded in the pathways. And certainly the work that the curriculum committee is doing gets filtered down to the department heads. And so we look at some of the things that come out of that committee, and that influences some of the decisions we make around classes.
So then at this point, then, are you saying that like for new classes such as American Studies, which has been added for this next round, that there, that the newness of a class isn't related to a curriculum evaluation in any way of its content in terms of the anti-racism and anti-bias statement?
It'll go through the process.
It does go through a process.
It will.
And I remember in a former meeting, we had asked if we could be able to get some of that information of what that process looked like. Who could I follow up with to get that information?
I think we could. I think there's a couple of items that we're looking to maybe pull the curriculum ad hoc group together, and that might be a good place to share that information that you're looking for.
Thank you.
Put that together as part of, part of the agenda for that.
I'm making a note of that, Carrie Anne.
Thank you.
Okay. I see Dennis's hand up.
I'd like to go back to one of the comments that Bonnie made, which deals with the personal finance class. That's a class that we hadn't had in the past. And we, and we went through, you know, I don't want to say it was a stormy session, but there was an awful lot of discussion amongst the school committee as well as the administration at the time, that, you know, we really needed that personal finance class because we had a, what we felt was a major problem amongst the general public and graduating students of, you know, that they really didn't have a good handle on quote, what we would generally classify as personal finance. So I'm a little bit concerned about if that information is now wrapped in something that's, that's say, an accounting class or something else that a large body of the people that we're trying to address to make sure that they had that background in personal finance won't be taking those classes where it's embedded into that. And so I really question this whole idea of dropping that class.
No, that, it's not necessarily being embedded as something else. You know, we also offer a financial literacy class, which doesn't fit into social studies, which is why under personal finance, the social studies piece is embedded in that economics class. You know, we do spend some time in middle school addressing those specific things that in the past, we weren't spending a whole lot of time on. And so part of our middle school curriculum that our guidance counselors do, we use Navient as well as what's embedded in some of the classes, is more around some of those initial personal finance type ideas. And so we have some of it embedded as only a sixth grader, a student success class, and in seventh grade and eighth grade as well, in some of what we do with the kids in their sort of elective classes, their specials.
Thank you very much. I'm going to recognize Hannah.
Thanks. I had a comment kind of connected to Carrie Anne's, just bringing up, doing the curriculum review with an anti-racism lens. I was hoping to see like in the English courses, I'm sure that all the authors being offered aren't being listed there, but I was hoping to see some more diversity of authors listed in this document. I think aside from Sandra Sisneros, I didn't really see that reflected there. And even if these aren't the only authors being read, it'd be nice to see that in this, in this document. And my question came up looking at this. I don't know if it's exactly relevant to this conversation, but in the math courses where a graphing calculator is recommended, are there any that the school can offer for students who aren't able to purchase one?
We do have some. And we don't, we've never had an issue where a kid can't afford one and we can't provide one. So that hasn't been an issue.
Yeah, good point. All right, I'm assuming that the people whose hands are up, they just didn't put them down because they asked their question.
No. Well, my hand is up.
No, but I'm trying forward. I'm not sure I'm recognizing you. Is this a burning question because you had, you had some time already?
I could have asked the question already. Yes, this is a burning question. Under a student transferring out of the school, there is a checklist. And I know we had spoken as a school committee about the importance of an exit survey. And I know Beth had acted in that area. And I, it's not shown as one of the things to be completed in the process of dropping, not dropping. in the process of dropping, not dropping out, but of leaving our school district. Is, is that something that's not being done? Because it was an issue for the school committee, and I know Beth had acted on it. And aside from the fact I've been asking a lot of questions, I really like the improvement in the comprehensive nature of this handbook. It's much better, in my view.
Thank you.
So a question and a compliment.
Well, thank you. Are you, you're talking about the transfer from school on page 10?
I don't, I'm looking at the screen, so I don't have the document right in front of me. There are five things you have to do, like you have to have a form signed by a parent, you have to return your books, you have to, that checklist, like there are five items, but it does not include the exit interview.
I think the reason, I mean, the reason why I don't think we've, we've added that is that in some cases, we have kids who are moving to different states. And so we don't put that as one of the things, because we don't necessarily have an exit interview for a kid who's moving from Massachusetts to Texas.
I, I would just say that so as not to take up time now, since that was a motion by the full school committee, I think it was two years ago, and since Beth's been acting on it, I don't need, we don't need to debate it, but Beth, if you can determine with Jesse, how that's handled?
So that's, it's two different things. The motion that I have, I have an exit survey for faculty and staff or people who leave the district for whatever choice, and I have a process for that. Families, we, you know, we work with them and help them as, as they're moving on, and, and they may choose to sit down. We always offer that, whether they do or not. But I have a formal process for those who leave the district. If they give an announcement that they are moving on for whatever opportunity, I, I ask them for if they would, you know, participate in an exit survey. Then that information stays with me. That is what I've acted on. Based on what the recommendation was from the committee.
All right, Dennis, are you needing another question? Or are we ready to vote?
I, I am not ready to vote. I, I was, you know, I, I wanted to make some more comments on that. I strongly feel that we should not pass any program of studies that does not have what we put in it years ago, which is, which gives us assurance. And it was to be done to, because this was a problem at all five towns, to guarantee that every student is exposed to some level of personal finance education.
Well, Dennis, my understanding of Jesse's response is that it is embedded on a yearly basis starting in sixth grade, and it would be very hard to track. And it's actually a management decision. I trust that.
It's our decision, and I'm, I'm just telling you right now, I would never vote for this until we have something like that. We went to great effort to make sure that we had something like that, and I see no reason why that need still doesn't exist.
I just want to say one more thing. Did you not hear how they've decided to integrate this into many grade levels, so it may not need to be the separate course that you once thought? Does that make any sense?
No, I'm saying I don't care whether it's in one course or it's in forty courses. The point is that we put a plan in place that we felt would guarantee that every student graduating from our district would have some formal exposure to personal finances. Period. Straightforward and simple, just like that.
Okay, so I, I think the question's been answered that they do. And so you can, you, you can, I'm not arguing with your position. Is there anybody else who needs further clarification, Jeffrey? I see you both hands.
Thank you. Carrie Anne and Hannah, Hannah, they actually kind of jumped into what I wanted to say, but I want, I agree with both Carrie Anne and Hannah. I think it's very important when we're talking about a curriculum study, this is a, an advertisement to kids and families of things that are offered. When we're talking about graphing calculators and resources that have a financial cost, and even though we have some, we need to be very explicit in that graphing calculators will be provided to those who do not have them or whatever. We need to be explicit in the resourcing for it, because the admission might make somebody decide, I can't do that. So we need to be very proactive in our inclusion and the way that we put out public documents. And then I agree also, it was the one thing that jumped out at me in the program studies was the lacking of the diversity in the, the English offerings. So my hope is that that's corrected for next year, when we move forward, that we have a better representation again in the eyes of inclusivity. Thank you.
All right. I'm ready to start a roll call, but I don't see any more hands up.
I, it's Bonnie again. I know you're in a rush there, but this is critical. It's what goes out in terms of our students. And I think the fact to say that financial literacy is mushed around in, you know, middle and high school, and that, you know, we pay attention to diversity, we pay attention to issues related to race. I think what we need to do is maybe put in a statement at the beginning of the document, which says that, you know, we have this emphasis. You know, with all of that great information that we have in the beginning, I think it would be easy for us to put in that a financial situation never stands in the way any equipment, that no child is ever blocked from taking, participating in a class as a result of not having financial wherewithal. And I think we could have just a paragraph in one of those first pages, which are really beautifully written. And we could have another paragraph that's, that talks to our commitment to citizenship and personal finance by talking about these being themes. And that if these are things that we stand for, I, I would have to agree, you know, with what Dennis said. We have a commitment on the almost twenty thousand dollars a year we spend for student education. That when we talk about expectations of student learning, as Jeff just said, it's, it's an issue in terms of our families, and I think it should be out there.
All right, so in terms of the motion that was made, does the group want to add that we would like to have a statement in, in the opening part, which says our commitment to those items of personal finance, equity, and include, you know, whatever the language would be, so that we make it clear that that's being attended to, even though the course descriptions do not go into detail about that.
For me, my reaction is, given what we're saying as a school committee that we're committed to, if there is a way for us to insert that, I think making such a major commitment to racial equity, to issues related to bias, to issues related to sending our students out as solid citizens, can be acknowledged in a few sentences in the beginning without, you know, ripping apart and saying, in, in grade seven, they first get introduced to the concept of a budget.
Do you want to put that into a motion or to make a, a part of our passing a motion that, or make a separate motion that we request that the administration add a paragraph into the introduction that reflects the values that we.
I'd be happy to make it as an amendment to the motion, or if people are not happy with that motion being amended, then I would be happy to make it as a second motion, as another motion.
Well, for the sake of, only having to do one vote.
All right, then I will amend the current motion that if the person who made, I was the second, but whoever made the motion, my amendment would be that a statement be made so that to, in the opening pages of this course of study that speaks to the district's commitment to anti-bias racial justice, and that we have that paragraph, and that we have another paragraph or a sentence which says, in preparing our students for adult life, we are committed in our coursework to students graduating as financially literate
Yeah, yeah.
and good citizens.
Lynette wants to speak. Yeah.
Can, can you approve the first motion that we made?
Yeah.
And then have Bonnie go on the second motion, amend and the handbook, the statement for the anti-bias, anti-racism. But then keep going on into the other thing. That should be a separate motion as well. Because suppose if somebody doesn't vote, doesn't want to vote on the anti-racism, anti-bias, but wants to vote on the financial. And now it has to be separated out into.
Yeah, okay, Beth has something to say here.
Could I, could I just make a suggestion that, and I've seen this done, and I think it's a, a good idea, is to work on an opening statement that highlights our values for each year and what we're focusing on overall in the program of studies, which would encompass all of the things that, you know, whether it's a change, we still value personal finance. We value looking at our curriculum through a lens of anti-racism and anti-bias. But it's that opening highlight state of what we value at the beginning of the program of studies. And we'll put that in. If that, if that could just be it.
That is the motion.
Okay.
It's serving that in the, the opening page.
Our commitment to citizenship and teaching kids, it's right in the beginning.
Right. And that all, you know, because that says that all of our curriculum is viewed with in terms of our anti-bias and racial equity.
Okay, Carrie Anne, I see you, I see you.
Point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order. What, you're making an amendment to the motion, and we don't have it made by the actual person who made the motion. So can, can we get that?
Okay, point of order, Jeff. We haven't even decided whether we're going to amend that or we're going to vote on the original motion and add the second motion. So we're still deciding the best way to go about this.
I'm sorry, but I think Jeff is right. If I don't have a second to the motion, to the amendment, to add that opening statement, then it just dies.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, well, let me just say that Lynette suggested that we first vote on, that we separate the two things, that we could have a motion to amend the program of studies with the addition of a value statement. And then we could vote secondly to accept the program of study. She doesn't think it's a good idea to put the two things together in one vote. Anyway, so we're not voting on anything yet, and we're still discussing the original motion, which was to accept the, so is that what, Carrie Anne? Did you want to speak to that?
Um, no, I want to speak to the fact that having a statement in the beginning saying that we're committed to anti-racism and that it's our value, and then having, you know, a college prep world history one that is just looking at colonialism, and then the AP history class, which starts at Columbus. You know, there's, there's a disconnect. It's not matching. Our values are not matching our curriculum. And so I do not think it is, I do, I would, I do not support a statement in the beginning saying that these are our values where they won't be matched.
Yeah.
Okay.
How?
Dennis, you have your hand up?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, you're starting to talk, so.
And I forgot to raise my hand. I, I agree with Carrie Anne. I, I hate to put a stop to this, but it just doesn't, something isn't quite right with this.
Well, let's hear.
How difficult would it be to give them a chance to work it out in some way? I mean, how much time is needed? How soon does this have to be approved?
Okay, Jesse can speak to that.
In order for us to get it printed and be able to have it get to the students so they can pick classes for next year, we would need it approved pretty quickly.
What do you mean by quickly? Tonight?
I, I was hoping we were going to approve it tonight. But if it, if you don't approve it tonight, it just sets back, or we can give it to the kids to pick classes.
Can I, can I ask a question, Jesse? Because in these course descriptions are, are very brief. And I think some, I've heard people say they would like them to be richer so that when people are reading them, they're aware of the cross-section of cultural exposure there is. And not that you're changing the content of the courses, but you're being more clear about the, the range of what's being offered. So we are going to probably have to have a special meeting before the first of April, because we have other things that we have MOUs, or we have things to talk about. So we could possibly get this back to not having to wait till the first. We'll have, likely have a meeting before that for other reasons. Let me put that on the agenda. I mean, we can see if it passes without those changes, the fuller statement. I, I guess we'll go to vote and see if we approve it, and then it we'll go from there. Does that make sense? I don't know.
I mean, I think we have to think about what the standards are. I mean, I don't know if that would help people with the decision of that. But I mean, right now, I, I don't know if they're asking to change the standards, or they're asking to change, you know, they don't feel like that's reflective. I mean, we have, we have a.
Well, there are state standards that have to be, that are expected to be covered in these courses, but I would imagine.
I'm not saying that they're not being more robustly covered than what maybe is the impression in this, but, but I mean, we're, we're not going to completely abandon that whole thing by next week. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, if there are other books and things that have been added that were not listed because we might have been using text from last year, that's one thing.
That's right.
We're not asking for revision of courses. We're asking for a more fleshed out understanding of what is included in the court. That's, I don't, I think that's the only fair thing we can do at this point.
It was really hard to hear that cross talk. What you just said, Jane?
I can restate, what Beth was saying, that there are state standards for the, the English curriculum and the social studies curriculum. That, so we can't completely change a course. But what we can do is be more explicit about what's included currently because there's only one or two books mentioned. There's many more books than articles used than what was listed. And as Hannah said, I think we should be, the description should be full enough so people can see the cross-section of, of things that kids are exposed to. And that would not take as much work because if teachers have the list of books or they're in the process of reviewing the list and adding things to them, but they're not changing the basic curriculum because that's state mandated.
Or at least that, yeah.
Is that, did you hear that?
Still have a question.
Okay, so call the question.
You have a question.
Oh, you have a question, or did you call the question?
No.
You have a question?
You're muted. You're muted, Jeff.
Definitely don't hear you. Thank you.
This is back. I understand, I, I'm agreeing with a lot of voices here saying that this is a hard thing, given the disconnect of what we're saying that we are in there. Beth, I'm hearing what you're saying about what the state provides. I, I guess I have two questions. One, what is the clear deadline if we can do another meeting to try to get better language out there that's more, that creates? Is it, do we have like a few weeks to work with to come back and rework this? And then the other question is, how much can we do in terms of the rewriting of, not rewriting, but talking about like the description of the class? How much latitude do we have within the statute to write that? Because if, if we don't have any latitude, then we should be maybe making a motion to write to our representatives that this is not a good thing. Maybe we advocate at a legislative level. So I guess my question is, how much, what time do we have?
Well, take the time that we need within reason. But I, I'm saying, I think that this is part of the larger discussion that we've been having for a long time. We also have to think about, and I'm not saying this to be sarcastic, but we opened this meeting with bandwidth. I mean, we are going through COVID. We are now going to reopen schools. We have, we have a ton to do. And all of this work is being done in tandem, right? So we are going, we, we have stated that we are going through a curriculum review process. We're currently starting with math. We're not going to get to every single thing and not everything's going to be exactly where we want it, but we're going to keep working at that. So I'm trying to be realistic and be honest about what I think we can accomplish in a timeframe to get a program of studies out to students for next year. Not saying that we're going to stop doing work and not saying that we're going to continue to improve and work through curriculum. But I'm not sure we can do a, all of this reasonably in, in that amount of time.
Yeah.
I don't think a couple of weeks is going to satisfy everybody here, is my point. You know what I'm saying? And I want to be as, as, I want to be as open to what I think realistically can be done.
May I make a suggestion for an amendment to the motion? Bonnie's amendment wasn't seconded though, was it, or?
We're going to go back to the original motion because that's what this discussion is about. Bonnie suggested an amendment to that, but the, the maker of the original motion hasn't accepted that. So who made the original motion? Art, okay. So you're talking to Art now, Jeff Lee.
Um, Art, my concern is that you're not going to get the votes if we don't have an amendment that's advisable. Maybe with the, the votes, I think people want to vote for that curriculum. I would say that, that the amendment that Beth laid out of like commitment towards inclusivity, diversity, financial literacy are still important values, but making it very clear that, that we're aware of the disconnect between the program of study descriptions and where we're headed towards as a group. And I think it's a little bit more, eh, culpa. Sorry, if we, if we could add language like that, where it's a little bit more putting it on our shoulders as a school committee that's trying to turn the ship. And maybe make it more of a strong statement that, you know, hold us accountable as a school committee for next year.
So what was the amended motion?
I can be more concise, but do you, do you pick up what I'm putting down, Art?
I don't, I don't understand what you're trying to say. But you could be a little more, if I can get it down in writing.
Well, Art has to accept it first, right? Otherwise, we will.
I can get more concise on the language, but I'm trying to see if we're on the same page.
Remove my motion and take my motion off the table and go from there. It'll be easier.
I, I just want to add something here. School committee made an anti-bias, anti-racist statement that is something that we are very dedicated to. That was a school committee vote. We got a commitment from our superintendent and administration to consider going into this process with us, which we knew was going to be slow because that's the way schools work. Had we wanted to see a program of studies that had the changes in it, we would have been prudent to bring that up in September. We know that they're reviewing curriculum. So I think we need to understand that it's not changing as fast as some of us might. And it may be changing faster than we can notice from this particular document. But I'm, I'm concerned that the process of getting kids enrolled in classes doesn't mean that when they get to those classes, they're not going to have the content that, more of the content that you are hoping for. So I don't think it's an either or situation. So I don't like to put my opinion out there that often, but I feel strongly that this is an unreasonable time to put extra demands. And we know what our goal is, and we are going to work toward it as a committee. But we have to work with, with our administration and faculty to get there. So now we need a motion. Yeah, Beth has something to say.
The only other thing I would say is, I wasn't looking at the proposal that I said originally as a value statement. And I, I hope, maybe I can be clear. One, why I was hoping to include was more of a statement saying that we're going through a curriculum review process. A kind of highlighting that is, I'm not saying it's a value and then, because I think that's what's creating even a bigger disconnect. So I think when you're highlighting the fact that we're looking, going through a process, it means it's not completed, right? We're going through a process. And we could highlight maybe where we're starting. You could talk about where personal finance has been included. It's an important value for us, and here's where we have it highlighted, citizenship. So I, I hope that my statements didn't give a wrong impression. I'm not saying we're making a value statement. I was highlighting things that we're doing that might stand out in the program of studies for people as they look through those, through it. Does that help at all? As opposed to making a value statement that would give a bigger, make a bigger disconnect?
I, I, I hear what you're saying in the direction. And I understand the burden that's on staff right now and given everything, which is a lot. It's not ideal, but it's, I think, a strong statement of like, we're doing a curriculum study review. Just because it might say that there's some sort of equipment, that there's not going to be a barrier of people's participation. It needs to be a very strong statement because not everybody reads everything. And the long-windedness of something, if they're looking at the class and see they need a graphing calculator, or they're looking at an undiversified list of authors and honors English, that's going to be, if that's all they're looking at it, because that's their initial interest, they're going to be like, that's not for me, and they're going to walk away. So I'm not sure if like, it's going to do everything that we want it to, but I think it's, it's a compromise. And I think if it's strongly worded, I can get behind it this year. But next year, I don't think it can stand personally.
All right, so somebody want to make a motion that we can vote on here?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Okay.
My motion.
Yes, I did.
My motion would be, is that we table this document until the next meeting. And in the interim, Jesse, working with his department leaders, looks at the course descriptions with an eye to, one, any place that involves costs. It is clear that no child is precluded from taking a course because they can't afford something. That particularly in both English and social studies, the course descriptions are reexamined with the issues of anti-bias racial equality in those descriptions. I do not think this would take an enormous amount of time. So that is my motion. They come back to us with a curriculum guide that reflects the issues we've raised. No costs, any courses related to the issue where we can be sensitive to issues of bias and race. And that we are clear, because I reread a couple of them, that we are clear, that we are maintaining our commitment to citizenship and graduating students with, as good citizens and financially aware citizens.
Second.
All right, well, that, that's the way. Yeah.
We'll get it.
Well, okay.
We'll get it.
All right, so is there a second to that?
It was. Jeff. Jeff seconded it.
Right, okay, so. Carrie Anne, do you still have your hand up for the session, or can we vote?
I just wanted to speak to what felt, what I needed to, I, to move this forward. And that I hear the needs, both in terms of the intense stresses that this exact moment of COVID is placing in terms of reopening and needing to get these classes in front of our students and wanting to create smoothness. And so I think that if there, to somewhat, to, I think, to Beth's point, I need more information about how these issues are going to be dealt with in the curriculum review. And to Jane's point, in the next year. I understand that this is the wrong time to be having this conversation. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the right time. And so I am, if we could create some sort of action associated with passing this plan of how this is going to be dealt with, I can, I can pass this so this way we can get this in front of our students. But I just really want to know how, how we're going to deal with this for the next round.
Fair enough. I see some heads shaking about the.
Yeah, my hand is back up.
Okay, take it away.
Who, who's your call?
Which one of us?
Bonnie, your hand is back up.
Okay, I think addressing what Carrie Anne said, if when Jesse undertakes with his team leaders a review of the courses and his, his department head say, oh, wait a second, these are the only authors we include. Well, that's going to be a wake-up call to carry out what Carrie Anne said. If they say, oh, no, we're not, we don't begin the, this course anywhere before 1754, then that's a wake-up call. So there's enough, you can then hide, in many cases, behind state guidelines. I think it's a, it is car- carrying forth on our commitment. And yes, I think it's a separate issue, the, as Beth brought up, the whole issue of curriculum, and that's separate. But I think this gives us a way, I don't want the teachers to lie and say, oh, yeah, you know, Maya Angelou is the beginning, the end, and the middle of my poetry course, my American Lit course and everything else. It, I think it'll be a good assessment tool for Jesse. And I would, that's why I'm suggesting this as a way for us to move forward now, but totally agreeing with Carrie Anne, there's bigger picture.
So are you keeping your motion that you want this done in two weeks? Or are you saying?
Yes, I think, I, if it is, I think it definitely, in my view, this could be definitely done within two weeks. You've got really smart people who head up your teams, Jesse. You're smart and very efficient at this. And I think we could have a new document that addresses the priorities that we bought up to, we've brought up today. And I don't want to drag it more than that because Jesse needs it.
Well, if you're willing to come back in before, before the first of April.
I'd be more than happy.
All right, so we have this motion to ask teachers to make additional entries into their descriptions to make a case we are missing a reflection of what's happening.
It's Jesse and his team leaders. His, is whatever his department is.
Yeah. And we had a second from Jeff on that?
Correct.
Okay, so let's take a vote on that. I'm not sure whether, if you feel that that is asking too much of teachers now, I would suggest a no vote. And if you think it's reasonable, a yes vote makes sense.
You're not supposed to be editorializing, my dear.
Saying that if we just need it, then we can go on to another motion, I would think. So this is a way for people to.
Okay.
Right? Okay, so.
I think Dennis has a comment or a question.
I, I was going to call the question and make a comment. How do we ensure that this, in fact, gets dealt with in the future? But it's, it's just a comment. I don't need an answer now.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
But I called the question.
Okay, so everybody give some thought, and I will call a roll, call a vote.
Well, first of all, because she has called the question, you now have to take a roll call vote on calling the question.
Yeah, second to the call the question.
I'll second.
Okay, so now we need a roll call vote. Thank you very much, Dennis. So a roll call vote. Jeff? This is on.
Called a question? Is this the vote for the call to question?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, I don't think Danielle's on anymore. Dennis?
Jess, yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yeah, okay, so now we're voting on Bonnie's motion to table this until we hear from teachers more details about more, about content that's more relevant to the values that we express.
Jane, let me, it is to table it to a point definite that we are presented with a new document at our next meeting for option.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we're going to go around and vote on that. Jeffrey? Uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis? Dennis here?
Yes.
Uh, Bonnie Silver?
Yes.
All right, um.
You didn't vote.
I know, um. No. Um, so we, it passes, and we will, um, hope that, um, we can, that the teachers, uh, the leaders can get this done. And we will be meeting, I believe, within the next two weeks for other reasons. So, um, we can get this back as soon as possible. All right, thank you for all of your thoughtful comments. And we go on to unfinished business, which we don't have. Oh, sorry, we have fall sports follow-up. With a vote required, so this is Jesse?
Yep, so, um, I'm coming to you again about Fall Two for sports. Um, we voted last time, or I should say, you voted last time, on soccer and volleyball. Um, tonight I just want to talk briefly about, um, a unified sport option of basketball, um, which, um, we talked about for, I would say, probably the last five years, um, whether or not we, we had enough kids to get it off the ground. Um, it's really geared towards our special needs kids, um, and then using some, um, uh, other students who, um, would be part of that, um, team. And so it would be a, a pro-ed, uh, basketball team. Uh, they normally, uh, participate as a fall sport. Um, because of, uh, Fall Two, there's a couple other schools that are going to have teams. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to get it off the ground, um, but we're going to try. And it might just be some practices for the team, um, but it could include some competition. Um, we've had a lot of support from our Office of Student Services. Uh, we've actually had, um, a, a teacher from that department and a teacher from the, a, a regular teacher who have expressed some interest in, in maybe coaching. Um, and so our athletic director Josh King is trying to, uh, see if he had enough kids to, to put together a team. Uh, if they had games, it would operate like we're doing now with no fans, um, and, um, just the players. Um, and if we can't get games going, it might just be practice in the hopes of still being a competitive team, uh, in the fall of, uh, 2021. Uh, the other one on, on the table is, uh, football. Uh, we have, for those of you who are new to the school committee, uh, we have a cooperative program with Monument Mountain. Uh, they own the football team, and they allow, uh, students from out of it to participate. Um, depending on the year, we get anywhere from five to 10 kids who participate. Um, most of these kids start at the youth level, um, and these kids play together until they get to high school and then until they graduate. And so, um, we have somewhere in the vicinity of five to 10 who are interested. Um, I think the number is seven, uh, who played last year. And then, uh, there's three more who have expressed some interest in playing. Um, so, you know, we've seen a lot of really good things, uh, happen in the two sports seasons we've run so far. Um, so I'm hoping that you will, uh, support that for the kids. Um, I have had conversations with, um, the Board of Health, um, about this. Um, and actually, because we talked on the phone, I previewed what the spring looks like, which I don't want to talk about tonight, but, um, just to give, uh, Martin a heads up so he could talk to, um, the board, uh, the rest of the members of Board of Health about what we might be having, uh, come for spring. Um, and, um, Martin was in support of us, um, adding these two to our Fall Two, um, fourth.
All right, so, um, I see Dennis's hand up. And I see Jeffrey second, and I see Carrie Anne.
Jesse, I, I think you may have answered the question. I'm just a little unsure, because I have trouble hearing through your mask, like all of us do. Uh, so it sounds like you have talked, you have discussed these, these new items that we would be voting on now, uh, with our, our local, uh, you know, Board of Health Chair, Martin, right?
Yep.
And he, and he's on board, because I know we went, we, we went through this before in terms of, uh, sports during the era of COVID. And we, we had left that, that we're, we were, we as a body were going to be okay if Martin was okay.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I had explained last time. Um, I can't remember if it was for the original fall season or for the winter. Uh, one of those seasons, I haven't talked to Martin prior, because I, I thought it was, um, more respectful to come to you as a school committee first. Um, but when you guys made that clear, um, when you all made it clear, I, I went to Martin, um, the next time. And this time, uh, same thing, we talked about it, and he was in, uh, complete support because of, uh, you know, really where the kids are and, and, um, you know, giving them opportunities to participate in some of their passions, um, in what is an increasingly difficult time.
Okay, thank you. That was the, the one thing that I had wanted to, to know about, you know?
Thank you.
Uh, Jeffrey, you're next.
Yeah, sorry, I've been jumping between background filters. I wanted you to see my hand when it raises, uh, so I wasn't trying to goof off or anything. Um, Jesse, I'm a little confused about sports, too. This is the delayed fall sports season for, uh, what was considered, um, too risky of sports in the fall. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. It was, um, the MIA, which governs athletics in Massachusetts, created the Fall Two for any sport that didn't get played. So really, uh, some of the Pioneer Valley schools are running basketball during Fall Two. Um, in Berkshire County, it was most of the fall sports that didn't run in what was the regular fall. Um, and so schools felt more comfortable pushing the traditional fall sports into Fall Two to give more time, um, around some of these COVID issues to figure out ways to do it. Um, in the case of soccer, it was really helpful because, uh, we were able to run soccer under the youth organizations. And a lot of, uh, the protocols they use, um, the MIA has now adopted for Fall Two. Um, and basically, football, um, and, uh, soccer did not run in the fall. And so Berkshire County schools have said that they'll run those in this Fall Two season.
And when does it begin and when does it end?
Uh, if, uh, Fall Two begins, well, actually, it can begin this Friday. We're not going to begin until Monday, um, because our basketball season ends on Monday with our last game. And we have a lot of kids that play both sports, so. Um, and it would end, I believe, April, um, 28th, which then allows the, um, spring season to begin on May 3rd.
Okay. And then unified basketball, I, I didn't catch the thing. Is this, um, it's a co-ed? People with special need, a team with special needs?
Well, it, it would include students.
Okay.
Also, um, other players as well. And that's why they call it unified. Um, it's part of, it's part of the initiatives of the Special Olympics. Um, we've had a couple of schools in Berkshire County who have had teams, um, over the last couple of years. Um, and we have talked about doing it here, but really didn't have the, uh, student body to do it. And so we think we have some interested kids now who, and which is why we want to try to get it off the ground, um, in this Fall Two season, um, and then hopefully be able to get some momentum for next fall.
I think this is absolutely awesome. I, as a high schooler, I participated in a lot of unified sports with Special Olympics, and it is one of the most transformative experiences of my life. It's, it, it goes way beyond just having fun and playing sports. It's, it's transformative for everybody.
We're pretty excited about it.
Yeah. Carrie Anne?
Thank you, um, and, uh, Jesse, I really appreciate you, um, bringing me as a new person up into some of these terms. Um, that's really helpful for me. Um, so I generally have concerns, uh, as we all do. I get particularly nervous about kids and COVID with our general, um, lack of data about how COVID moves around through kids. I know that our numbers as a district are excellent, that we have done an incre-, you all have done an incredible job of keeping our children safe. It still brings, um, up a lot of concerns for me when we're talking about sports. Um, and I'm curious, though, with the football, that is, as, I, I think that you mentioned, Jesse, that's with, um, a different district, correct?
Uh, the next one over, yeah. Berkshire Hills is a district, Monument Mountain owns the team.
Got it. So I have particular concerns about voting yes for football, given that it's then, you know, um, I just, you know, then it's like dealing, us, our students dealing with the rules of another district. And right now, at this particularly vulnerable time, that feels a little like something to have even greater caution against. And I'm wondering if, if, if other people do agree, if it's possible for us to separate out the football from the basketball?
Well, I mean, you can do whatever you want in terms of separating out those two sports for a vote. Um, I will tell you that, you know, Monument Mountain has been part of all the sports that we've done this year in the first fall and then in the winter. They're one of the original five that did basketball. I'm sure, um, some of you have probably seen the papers recently. Uh, after the original five, there's been five other schools that have taken on basketball, including one who's going to run it for two and a half weeks. Um, but Monument's been part of it from the start. Um, so, um, they're following the rules like we're following the rules around athletics. Um, I mean, I certainly understand what you're saying. Um, but I, I think that they'll run a program that follows the rules around COVID and doesn't put kids in risk.
I understand that in a theoretical sense, you know, especially when it's a team placing, playing against one team. You know, i- i- it feels, for me, it feels different than, you know, partnering with another school district, you know, about where, about the rules of how it's working. So that's just my personal experience or feeling.
Okay, so if we want to, uh, make a motion about, uh, Fall Two sport. Oh, Dennis, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Jesse, um, has Monument Mountain followed similar rules as to the ones you described for our district in the past that you know of?
Well, I can tell you, um, yeah, I mean, I, I can tell you based on basketball, um, they're, they've set up their basketball gym in the same way that we did. They had the same protocols around, um, hand sanitizing. Um, when they came down here and played in our gym, which I saw it live, uh, in their gym, I was watching a video of it. Um, so this is what I saw on, on camera. But here, the, uh, kids were very respectful to the rules, um, came off the court, hand sanitized. At the end of the game, gets, got dressed right away and left. Um, so I, I feel like, uh, as a school, that, that they're following the rules set up by the MIA uh, for safety that, that, um, in the way they should.
Fans, what about fans?
So they have not had any fans, uh, for basketball. Um, I do not believe, um, there's, uh, I don't know if they've talked about what it looks like for Fall Two. I know that in soccer, they've talked about, um, limiting the number of fans, um, on, at games, uh, like they did in the previous fall. Um, I would assume football is, uh, probably going to do something the same. Um, but again, I don't run the football team, so I'm not as versed in the rules of, of what football's going to do as, as I would be if we owned the team.
Um, and Jeffrey? What?
I, I just wanted to be clear. Uh, how, uh, the way, the other examples of football being played in this country has been without masks and whatnot. I'm assuming with the high school students, there will be masked football players. Because there's, there's nothing, you get hit hard, there's a lot of fluids that can come out of somebody's mouth.
That, that's a mandate by the MIA, which is that the football players will wear masks. And if you're not in the game, standing on the sidelines, coaches have to distance the kids. So I don't know how many of you are familiar with football, but there's a, what they call the players box, like the area that you have to put the players in. They've extended it, um, by, I think, 10 yards on both sides. So it's 20 yards longer, and you only can suit up a certain number of players. So in the past, a school that had 60 players, which nobody in Berkshire County does, um, they now limit you, I think, to 45. Um, the last couple of years, uh, our, uh, Monument's program, including our kids, uh, the team has been a lot closer to 30 participants, sometimes, uh, 25 than it is to anything like 45. So, um, even if standing on the sidelines, masks have to be worn.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion, uh, regarding Fall Two sport.
The moves.
Um, is that motion to vote on both football and basketball together?
Out of deference to my, uh, colleague, I make a motion to vote for Unified Sports. As a separate motion.
Is there a second? Unified, five sports?
Second, I'll second.
Okay.
You got a second.
All right, so, uh, let's take a vote on, uh, committing the unified sport. Um, roll call vote, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, Jenna?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis here?
Yes.
Uh, Bonnie Silver?
Yes.
And Jane? Yeah.
I moved, I moved to approve, uh, Fall Two football.
Second.
Second from Arthur. All right, roll call vote, um, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, Jenna?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Uh, Carrie Anne?
No.
Arthur?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, yes for me, so it passes. Um, thank you for being willing to do two votes on that. All right, now, we have no unfinished business. And I don't think we have a curriculum coordinator's report.
That's me.
Um, so we are going to the business manager's report at this point. Chris, you're on. Ready for you.
Did I motion to, uh, move ahead to?
All right. Sorry, I was muted.
Oh.
Um, I, I have nothing, um, for the agenda. We have no warrants this particular time. We have no, uh, transfers. We'll have transfers at the next meeting, um, and warrants as well. But we just did all the warrants last, uh, last week, so we're all set.
Okay, thank you. Uh, business with district member towns. Um, the regional planning, regional school district planning board met on Tuesday night, um, and are concerned now with, um, getting an RFP, request for proposals, uh, to spend the $125,000 that, um, the, the group has, uh, been awarded from Jesse. And, uh, the, uh, procedure for how the applications will be reviewed and, um, a process for choosing these, uh, candidates. Um, I must say, I made an effort to try to make it, uh, broader and more inclusive, but, um, there seems to be, uh, uh, a rather strong feeling that we need to move ahead as fast as possible, because the money has to be spent by the end of June. Uh, the money is, um, under our care this time. The last, um, uh, grant was, um, in the, uh, awarded through Berkshire Hills. And, um, there's tomorrow, that 2 o'clock, we're going to be discussing how to get the RFPs out and, um, where they should be sent. And, uh, I think when that posted, um, I'm not sure that it's. I'm not sure that it goes to the full school committee.
No, it didn't.
Okay. Well, I'm going to forward it to the full school committee.
Good.
Anybody's willing, interested in seeing how the discussion is going. It's being considered by the, the three subcommittee heads, the chair and the vice chair of the, of the planning board and the superintendents are invited. But any public is, can have access to them. That's all I have to say for now. Yeah. It's on, posted on our website.
Jay, can I make a comment?
I would be happy to hear from you then.
I would suggest that you, one of the people that you send the RFP to would be probably Dr. Jake up at Berkshire Education Task Force. I mean, they've got tons of data and, and, you know, and Jake and the, the people that have been working with him, you know, are very, very capable, you know. And I, I think you might also get a very good price from him.
Yeah. I, I, I will put that forward tomorrow on your behalf. Uh, Carrie Anne?
Thanks. I'm wondering if, because Southern Berkshire was awarded the award, which town are we then required to follow their procurement procedures in a grant that's for the regional district? Does one town trump another, or does the school district have its own procurement processes?
I, this is the exact question I had mentioned to Jane, and I had actually said it the other night at one of the thousand meetings. But we, I don't know exactly how the public purchasing, I haven't had that hat on in a while. When I was a business manager, I was the chief procurement officer for a school district, and it was very specific. This group, I'm not sure how it applies. In my opinion, I think they would have to do, I think they have the opportunity to put the, the RFP out on comp buys or, you know, the public purchasing sites. But I, I'm not hearing that that's the direction. But I, I don't know enough about this structure and who really is the governing body, per se. You know, it's not, it's not a structure I'm familiar with or I remember in any of the courses. So I think really someone should make a call who, on, on how to do this the right way.
Who would be called?
I'd probably call the, the procurement, the attorney general, wherever I used to go for the class, I can think of her name right now. But I think there's a, there's a specific office, the person who runs the MCPPO designation, I call that office. I can't think of her name off the top of my head. I'm so sorry about that because she's lovely. But, and she could at least point us in the right direction about how, how are we structured and what exactly do we have to follow to meet the appropriate purchasing rules and regulations?
I would be happy to make that call if you told me who I was supposed to call.
Yeah, I'd have, I'd literally go online. I was looking the other day. I'll go online after and see if I can figure out which office I would be calling. I'd, I'd literally look up my, my designation actually is MCPPO. Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing. If, I think if you put that in, you'll have, there'll be an office that would come up with that, and that's where I would be calling.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. We're going to move on to, unless there's more questions about the district planning board. We will go on to subcommittee reports, which I'm very pleased with the work that started on the subcommittees. And let's see, let's hear from committees that wish to speak. So I'll ask, Jeffrey, do you want a finance report?
Guess what? We just voted through the, the budget today. So there's that. Town meetings are going on. I think it's just to be noted, Beth has made herself very available to the towns to go over and discuss the budget numbers. This is just another opportunity to the public. If you have questions, you know, there's a lot of opportunities to reach out, go to your towns and ask them if they want to bring in Beth as well to a select board meeting. But there's been a lot of really good work on this budget this year, especially of trying to keep the assessments down. Really good capital planning for the next five years on some major projects and just being really innovative of looking for funds where we can find it. We've got so much need in the district. Our families are really struggling, our, our students are struggling, and we're going to need a massive community effort to get these kids back in school. So I think the work that the whole finance committee did, along with the staff, is just, it's really, it's been a real honor to be a part of it. So thank you. And Beth, thanks for your leadership on this.
Dennis, do you have anything from the policy subcommittee?
No, we, we don't have any first reads, second reads, or even third reads.
Okay, Carrie Anne had her hand up.
Um, I just wanted, oh, am I muted? No, yes. I just wanted to ask if as a committee, I, if there's a way for us to talk with our towns about adding in some type of flyer or something in with the, either the tax bill or the budget, or something about town meeting, about ways that they could potentially donate to the Eagle Fund. You know, speaking to this part that Jeffrey's bringing up, that there's such a high need, and the school district has done such a phenomenal job of keeping the budget very reasonable, that there's so many needs that are getting unmet and that there could be the use of more funds. And what are the ways that we could be, you know, reaching out to our community for them to be donating some extra funds into our school district?
So I, I mean, I, I'm not sure, but I think the Eagle Fund usually spearheads their fundraising opportunities, whatever we can, you know, we usually support them with information on the website when they're doing different campaigns or, or whatever. But I don't, I mean, we are going to do our budget flyer. I don't know. You know, I don't know how, I don't know how that would work with a separate.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to let you know that I received a tax bill for a property in Cambridge, Massachusetts. And in that tax bill is an envelope in case anybody wants to donate to the public schools in Cambridge. Now, I don't know how they work that out. And I think it would be interesting to explore if that's possible. Obviously, it's legal in Massachusetts, if it can be done in the city of Cambridge. But I think it has, I'm not sure what kind of precedent it sets, but it, it's a good thing to consider at some point. I think now that it's been raised, maybe Beth can explore what the possibilities are. And maybe too late for now.
Well, I, I think it's a, a town-based issue. You know what would have been a, a good way to bring that up would have been at the superintendent's roundtable last night, where I usually have the select board members present, and we have another one, I believe it's going to be April 28th. But, you know, when they're thinking about those types of opportunities, because I, in school districts and fundraising, it has to be very, we have to be very careful. There are those rules. But the towns could do something different. And I think either the way to do it would be to, you know, head to a town meeting and speak in public comment, or to, if you can get them, I usually have a fairly strong representation from at least one, one select board member, finance committee member from all the towns in that group. They would be happy to hear those types of suggestions.
Thanks, Beth. Would it be helpful, I don't want to be making more work for you, would it be helpful to do research on potentially, you know, a similar model in Cambridge or wherever throughout the state? And then to either be able to give you that information and/or create some, something that, I mean, either I could present at the next roundtable or that you could present, what would be most helpful?
That would be helpful. Yeah, if whatever, if this is an initiative and less somebody might know from a town already, I don't know if you reached out to just your own town, for instance, and they might know how that could happen. And then if not, but then make a proposal for all five of what, how we'd like to gain some support for those organizations through this type of model, you know, that we've, we've seen happen in other locations.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get the details that I can.
Carrie Anne, you need to be a little bit careful because Cambridge is a, is a city or a town, you know, with their own school systems and all the rules and laws and everything else are different between, you know, that environment and say, a, a, a regional district like we are.
Thanks for the tip, Dennis. I'll be careful in that big city, I promise.
Well, no, I, I mean, it's just that they, you know, they could, they can do some things that, that, you know, if, if you donate some money to the Cambridge schools, you know, in effect, that's like, like, you, you can, you can say, okay, that's like taxes, you know, that type of thing. So I mean, you get into a, kind of a murky area there. And we're in a different form of murk.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. And now, Danil is not here to give a community relations public schools advocacy report. But we do have a piece that
Indies up.
Dennis, you're going to take care of it?
Who, me? No. What I was going to say is that maybe that should be something that should be discussed at the community relations and public schools advocacy meeting. That issue of donations that Carrie Anne brought up, should that be sent to that committee?
Makes sense. But while you're up there, since you
Down here.
You're up there for, the, you kindly drafted this letter for the, for us that was requested at the last meeting. And if we can get it approved, we can send it out. Do you want to say anything about it before? I think it's appropriate for us to take a vote on it because it's coming out of that committee.
All I can say is we have to decide who it goes to. But I also heard through the grapevine, and I don't know if Beth knows anything about this, but that there's been some discussion as to the way that they're going to handle the teachers' vaccination.
There's been tons of, saying about it, yes. But I think that the one piece, and I haven't, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see it ahead of time. But I think I'm not sure if, if we still have enough of a supply. Bonnie, did you have a chance to read it? Because on the supply.
A supply?
Yeah. I'm just wanting, because the supply, the advocacy, I think, is still on the supply, right?
Exactly. That's the big thing.
Not so much on the
Okay, so the, it currently is being sent to nothing was handed to me, so I found those names. Right. So I think this is, who it currently goes to is Governor Baker, Commissioner O'Reilly, Senator Hines, Education Inspector Terry Pysker, and Committee Lieutenant.
Isn't there a committee in this area that's handling the vaccinations in the area?
Well, this is the, to advocate to get the vaccine to that organization so they have what they need to, to put in the arms of the teachers. We, we already, I believe, have a commitment from our local health consortium that they're ready to go if they have enough vaccine. So that's what this is about.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Well, how about we?
I'll do a motion. I, I move that we approve this letter to send off to our representatives.
The second?
Second.
Second from Arthur.
May I speak to the motion? Dennis, thank you very much. I think the tone and the substance is perfect. And I wish I could write like you. And I just wonder, should we?
A second language learner, Jeff, to be able to do that. Just kidding.
You should see, hear my Spanish. It's still not that good. As my second language. But whatever, as I was going to say, should we have Lieutenant Governor also on that letter just to kind of try to get in front of as many people as possible that delivers the government?
I don't see why not. Yeah. Uh, Lieutenant Governor. There's room for it right here. We have room for one more. All right.
I, I would amend to my motion to include the lieutenant governor, if that's okay.
So just put it up. All right. I, I'd like to do a roll call vote.
Although with the lieutenant governor, then sirs would have to change to dear representatives or something.
Oh, yes. We have to take off the dear sirs. It would have to be here.
Representatives or?
Something neutral.
Madam?
Nothing.
Okay. Roll call vote to accept the letter with the addition of the lieutenant governor and a gender neutral greeting. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes, who's wanting to put my name in the bottom?
You get left off a lot, don't you?
Leave them off. I put an extra T in.
Dennis, Dennis here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yes. And this is record-breaking time to get a, make a decision and we need a letter and have it in our hand the next week. Pretty wonderful. Thank you very much for the advocacy. Negotiations, Bonnie?
We'll be meeting depending on discussion in the next few minutes.
Okay. Executive, Superintendent Evaluation is going to be meeting next, I mean, 18th at 4 o'clock for the training of the new members. Anybody who's interested in understanding the procedures that we use for evaluation is welcome to attend. Donovan is going to run us through that. And I'm going to call a meeting of executive minutes review as soon as possible because I would like to get all that up to date. So you'll be hearing from me soon. And in my chairman's report, I, I think I've talked enough tonight, quite more than I usually do. So that's enough for me. Because we have a lot to hear from Beth, that's very important.
So first of all, while we're pulling up my, I promised to be very short PowerPoint. But I wanted to say that we did have a superintendent's roundtable last night that was well-attended. And the first one, we were able to have, I think it went about two hours last night. And I thank you to the members. I think Dennis was there, Bonnie attended, and Jane was there. If I skipped anybody, I apologize. But we had, oh, Mark, I see, I skipped him again. Left him right off the letter, right off the meeting. That's all. So that was excellent attendance by the school committee, and I appreciate that. But I think it's fair to say we had a very robust conversation on a lot of different issues in the community. And we had, you know, it's, I find those conversations very valuable. We shared potential financial information. There was just a lot of sharing going on. So I, I encourage people to attend and and share their ideas across the table. We always learn a little bit something. Okay, so can we have the PowerPoint? So I can. Okay, so as promised, I wanted to give the committee Okay, so as promised, I wanted to give the committee kind of an update. After the after our latest and greatest information has come out from DUCI on what it means to reopen schools. So I couldn't make that any smaller for anybody, but this is just my guideline on the timeline, so March fifth was when the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Adopted amendments regarding the student learning time regulations on what they're calling an emergency basis. And so on March ninth, we got guidance. On what that means for in-person learning requirements. So what was published out there was that elementary school. It's it's in phases, let me say that, it's in three phases proposed passed by the board. Elementary school phase is grade K through five. Which means they are expected to return to full five day a week in-person learning, full days. No later than Monday, April fifth, twenty twenty-one. I'll talk a little bit, I know it says remote learning in there, but let me let me provide some clarification on that. In the next slide. The middle school phase is grade six through eight, which the. Suggested phase, it does not mean that it has to be, but the the absolute deadline for students returning to the same full. In-person instruction, five days a week, full time is by Wednesday, April twenty-eighth. And the high school phase, grade nine through twelve, is to be determined sometime in April. So that was the original guidance that was put out on March nine. On March tenth, notice after the guidance was released, was the commissioner's call with superintendents and here is all the fun stuff that we got. He had asked that the districts have surveyed their families to see what they're comfortable with for the remainder of this year, whether that would be. As you can see, the remote model, which is still available for this year only, which is my next bullet. Or coming back in the full in-person learning model. I, at the end of this PowerPoint, I have put the survey results, so we'll go through that. The remote model, which is a little bit confusing in the original guidance, is still an option for the remainder of the school year. It's important to note, and he highlighted this in the conversation, that the remote learning programming does not have to look the same as it does. Currently, in the three models that we were required to present, and there is a possibility. We need families to understand that it may not be the same teacher that they've had all year, it may not be exactly like it was, so there are going to be some modifications, but that option will still be available. Waivers are available on a very, very limited basis, there's quite a waiver process to go through, and if a district requires a waiver for. Any program, DUCI is committed to send a team out. To your district so they can actually walk through and help you problem solve prior to them approving your waiver. So they're taking it very, very seriously. We have today put up all of the guidance, there are, you know, some thirteen page documents on. The district requirements that have changed or have, I actually haven't changed DUCI, but more information on the distance requirements. But there's information on reopening, on vaccinations and on distance requirements, all out on our website. The latest and greatest out there for. For people to take a look at. They also mentioned that there would be additional federal funding, I believe everybody saw that the president signed it today, so. It's it's our SR three grant, which is what we're calling it. Which is estimated to be two to three times what we received in our last grant. Our SR two grant, so we received a little five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so our estimated. Range is to be two to three times that and that's. You know, that's a significant amount of funding. I see that Jeff has a stand-up, did you want to wait, Jeff, or did you want to talk right now?
I'll wait.
Okay. Also, on March tenth in the afternoon, as I think Bonnie alluded to, we had a small group initial meeting with the SB REA to discuss reentry planning as. Guidance was posted and out there for all and to work through any questions and concerns that we might have, we've had a very inclusive process all throughout. Our and we've worked very closely with the SB REA and stakeholders district wide and we didn't want this process to be any different. And then this morning, I brought in a lot of donuts and the administrative team met for several hours to begin the discussions on. Scheduling, planning, updates to safety protocols in an effort to begin to prepare our recommendation on how. We are thinking about implementing full in-person reentry plan. So as promised, I wanted to share directly the survey results so people could get the feedback, we had three hundred and fifty responses. Question one, what school does your child attend, so you can see. We have the nice graphic, but this might be easier to look at, you can see that it was. Split almost in half between Undermountain Elementary and Mount Everett, I think all of all of South Everett and New Marlboro Central families responded, so nice representation across the entire district. What grade ranges are your children fall under, again. You know, it was it was pretty well represented across, everybody's very interested in all of this, which we like to hear. Don't give me this button because I just go, it's like speeding in a car, it says, which model would you, I can't read it, but I'm. Oh, transportation, very important question because. Would you be able to transport your student for the remainder of year or whether or not they need a bus, just depending on. The the new guidance on the transportation, which is significantly. Reduced, but it's about two thirds to one third, it's like sixty-six percent exactly, that said they could still or are interested in still providing transportation for their students. For the remainder of this school year. Okay, now, now it just won't let me. I broke it. This is why they don't give me anything. I broke it. Hi there, what are you doing? Just kidding, we'll go back, okay. Want me to charge it? Oh, there it is. Hi, everybody, we'll be right there. Okay. I'm afraid to press the button, but I'm going to, okay, there it is. So you can see exactly what we said, it's literally two thirds to one third that said they were able to provide transportation. For the remainder of the school year, if needed. So the the next question was whether if we were able to invite all students with at least a three to six foot distance and following our mitigating safety protocols, would you choose to bring your child back full in person? Or would you remain completely remote? You can see overwhelmingly, we're at seventy-six percent who are ready for full time in person and eighty-five. Families or respondents would prefer the fully remote for the remainder of the school year. Are you comfortable? So this piece I thought was also really important because we wanted to make sure, as we said, we have involved stakeholders all along in this process and we want to continue to do that, so we said, would you be comfortable with? The administration going through and updating the protocols as we make the changes and updating the reentry plan to do that. Would you rather put the reopening task force back together? Or would you like us to have public forums so that people could ask their questions and overwhelmingly, again, two hundred and thirty-six people said, and I I take this as. A really good thing that they said, hey, we go ahead and put it together and we will. Work with the district and continue to follow the protocols and get everybody back into school safely, so. That is the survey and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, let's line up here. Do you leave your hand up all the time, Jeff, so you can be first?
Thanks, it was a question about SR three, is there any time limit on when we can spend it or can it bleed into the next school year?
SR two goes all the way through twenty-two, so I think this one goes through twenty-three.
Great, thank you.
I know that some of our middle school teachers teach high school courses, so how is this, when all of this gets. If we need with split, how is that gonna work with those teachers and the high school kids still not being there?
Well, we didn't say we were gonna split, I said that's what you could do, so we are in the process of having conversations around. What would be best for our communities and our schools and, I mean, I think intuitively, us specifically, we would have a hard time splitting middle and high, right? Just to start with. Numbers wise, so I think we're in larger conversations around what makes sense and what are our families telling us. District wide, right? About what they're ready for. And, you know, we're having initial conversations, but I can say fairly confidently that. You know, talking with facilities like Jeremy and Food Service, we can be ready to bring everyone back in in an appropriate way. But we still have lots of other things, just smaller details to figure out.
Carrie Anne? And then Bonnie?
Thank you. So my first question is, is that for the waivers, those would come into play for next year or are they required for this year?
It would be required for this year if you're not going to be able to meet the the. I guess the required dates that are that I presented in the first slide from the commissioner's guidance on. So what an example that they gave where they would they would consider a waiver, let's just say, if you have. They did K to five, but you have a five to eight middle school. Right? That's one where they would say, you're not, you don't maybe want to, maybe you just don't want to have fifth graders coming back to school and. Three or four weeks later have six, seven and eight come back, so they might consider a waiver for that. If something like that, it, you know, it has to be a. Really strong case for them to be considered, because they still might come out, they might send a team out and say. You know, how could we problem solve this and do you have enough space to do it differently, etc.
And do the, in the the guidance and in the articles that I've read, it did say that. That the that the remote learning wouldn't be allowed. So I'm confused, is that then why that's now changed? Or?
Yeah, it's never been a change as far as I've heard from the commissioner on a very consistent basis as a superintendent in the meetings weekly. I was surprised to see it the way it was phrased in the. In that initial guidance that came the the first part with the dates, because he did say. Clearly that they will be in option for families for the remainder of this year. And so I wanted to make that point, even though this initial guidance didn't say that.
It is confusing that they don't match. And then my final question is about for the thirty percent who are interested in some sort of conversation, task force. Option, how are you thinking about using that information going forward?
I feel, you know, I'm I'm always open to still having the conversation, inviting people to have it if if they want to have a conversation. And I, you know, I'm open to putting out dates if if we find that, but I think what I would do is continue to. Send. Documents home in a in a manageable amount, I'm not gonna update the eighty per eighty K each reopening plan and expect everybody to read that, I would be. Here are the highlights, here are the things we've taken into consideration when we made our decision, here are the updates. I don't think we're gonna be changing a tremendous amount of protocols because they've been working, but we'd be sharing how lunches are gonna go, what a schedule might look like. What to expect when you're doing pickup and drop off, you know, things that would would be relevant to. Those who haven't been. You know, in full person, full time, you know, what's your day gonna look like, this is a reminder and we'd just be communicating that out on a weekly basis as we make those decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie Anne, Bonnie?
Yeah, first, Beth, what was the reaction of your administrative team? To the idea of bringing everybody back starting on April fifth?
I think. I think where most people are super are are looking to bring everybody back as soon as we possibly can. So I think it makes the most sense, it look at the data. The data for families overwhelmingly says to try to bring them back, I think for this particular community. It would be very hard to split, we have families that split. Both both schools, both, you know, the elementary and the middle and high, it's quite a few families and I think it would be a challenge for them to. Just have the elementary students back and not have their other students.
So with that view, with you with your and your team's leadership. Would it be beneficial to you to have a vote of support from the school committee? To move ahead in this way, would you want that? And then do we then have more formal negotiations with the SB REA, with the full negotiation subcommittee, so those are the two parts. Tonight, do you want anything in terms of a vote from us? And then two, what follow up would you want from negotiations?
Well, I think it's our it's our due diligence to. Impact bargain anything that, you know, any potential changes, I really am not. Seeing a tremendous amount other than I think we would want to be looking at the data and ensuring to our teachers, we're not there yet, we haven't given them. Schedules, but I I think we're gonna work towards preparing that and giving them enough information to feel comfortable that we could bring them all in and be able to explain how we're gonna do that. With their input, we're gonna need their input too, so I think if, you know, if. The committee, as we work through this in a week or two, if we're coming back anyway for a few other things, maybe that would be the point where. Some additional support from the committee as to what our plans are.
So nothing, you're saying nothing at this point?
I don't think so, I think this is more about keeping you up to date and, you know, starting to work through the the details to. To make sure that we can do it the way we believe we can and should.
Great, and thank you for keeping us updated that way.
Thank you very much. I don't see any raised, other raised hands, so we have our finale.
Just so you don't get bored.
Yeah. Up there in the in your curtains, being your lamp, oh, there you go.
Okay. Beth, just Beth, just want to let you know that if you need any help with translating any documents for this, I'm here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, I don't think I didn't mark you down when you volunteered last time.
Race it, no, just kidding.
We got you.
Okay. Now I don't see any here. But I do see Sandy Hubbard over here.
I know you're on the edge of your seat, this is your, this is the finale of the night.
Yeah.
I did not write a report this week, I did a report last week, the only thing I wanted to say as we end up this evening is it didn't get into a package, but it will be posted, I'm sure. On the website, we've got notifications today from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that our peer focus monitoring review. our chief focus monitoring review was accepted, and we had no findings in the areas of special education and civil rights that they looked at. And you can look at that, that report and the areas that they addressed during their onsite visit, which was obviously remote, conducted remotely, the review of our files, surveys that were sent out to parents, and interviews that were conducted. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight, and that's, that's all I have.
Great.
With that?
Yeah, congratulations on the work that you've done.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah. All right, so then any future agenda items that want to be brought up at this point?
Thanks. Thank you for calling on me. So I, I think we're, I just want to express gratitude to this team, I really appreciate y'all. I have been having conversations within the community, and I think with our work with anti-racism and what we're trying to do, I think it would be beneficial to do, bring to the committee an opportunity to present a little bit more about our policy, about what happens around racist behavior in terms of our policy, and use it as an opportunity to educate ourselves, but also because it would be on an agenda item, to be able to listen to the community if they have comments on that, and I'd like to bring that to the floor. But some questions specifically would be, you know, what is our policy? What is the pulse, is the policy followed, and how do we measure it? And is it the right policy? And this is more of a way of, I know we're ongoing in a lot of the work that we're doing, but I think it's a good opportunity to listen to the community and not just be in ourselves. So it's my hope that we can at least have this as a conversation and put, you know, a little bit more pedal to the metal in terms of doing this really important work and bringing the community in on this process and getting it on our agenda.
My response to that, Jeffrey, is that the policy subcommittee has a group that's undertaking reviewing our whole policy book, including any policies related to this, to bring attention to places where we need to work in terms of how effective we are. So with your permission, I think I'm going to pass this to the policies committee to consider how they would put this together to work with us on it. And, and I will ask Dennis to put it on his agenda at their next meeting.
Certainly, I think that's, deferring to a subcommittee for the work is important in a good idea, a good step. I hope that when it comes back to the committee, it's not just in a policy subcommittee report, and that we actually line it out so that the community can see that we're explicitly talking about it. And just, I'm really wanting to hear more comments from the community as well and to encourage dialogue around this, so. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this.
Okay, Bonnie?
Okay. Quickly, first, I wanted to know if we've gotten any numbers on the pot money that's coming into our pot of money, and how we're going to be able to use it. So if we could hear that at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Are you talking specifically about cannabis money revenues?
Yeah. I know that Sheffield is already planning on what they're doing with theirs, but three percent has to go to us. Yeah, I, do any of the other towns have cann, public cannabis, where they have to give us money? I think it's just Sheffield.
I like that percentage, yeah.
As of now, I know Aggermonte will have one, but as of now. And the other thing is, exactly one year ago, Beth, sitting in your office in executive session, we found out that we were closing down.
Yes, I mentioned that at the opening of the meeting.
I, I know, but I just want to add to my thanks for how you, your team, and my colleagues on the school committee have responded, because whether we lost people close to us or not, everybody's been hit by this. So it's a thank you.
Much appreciated.
Hannah? You have something you want to add?
I'm just, I was hoping that maybe in our, one of our upcoming meetings, we could get an update on the gender-neutral bathroom, especially seeing that it looks like we're going to be reopening the schools fully.
So we can just tell you that they're in progress now, signage doors, fully in progress. So as soon as all of that can get here, we will, it's fully moving ahead.
In regard to that, we will be having an update at our next meeting of how our action steps are going on our plans for moving forward, our commitment. So that'll be on the first of April. All right. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so Arthur, and seconded by Dennis. Roll call vote. Let's see who's left here, Dennis Sears.
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jane, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Jane, thank you, Beth.